All right, it's six forty-five. I'm gonna call the joint meeting to order and ask that we stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, um, no real audience members yet either, so no need for introductions this time. We'll just do approval of the minutes from, uh, April eighth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, agenda is the third item, A through D. Does anybody wish to withdraw anything from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number four is uncollectible taxes. So I'll entertain a motion to transfer two million, three hundred ninety-one thousand, six hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighteen cents of uncollectible taxes, one million, six hundred seventy-three thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars and seventy-six cents for motor vehicles, four hundred eighty thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty cents for supplemental motor vehicle, and two hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred seventy-seven and ninety-two cents for personal property, and to recommend approval of this action to a joint meeting of the city council.
Well, that's us.
Yeah, that's us, to the city council, I guess, right?
So moved. Oh, do we have to take?
No, that's fine. I think I read it correctly.
Joint meeting out of there?
Yes, so we're gonna get rid of that stuff.
Cated at personal property.
So you're gonna move it without joint meeting in there?
Correct.
Great.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number five is, uh, the approval of the bulletproof vest grant. I'll entertain a motion to transfer twelve thousand, three hundred ninety-three from the general fund contingency account and an additional appropriation of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars within the special grants and donations fund for the two thousand, twenty-three bulletproof vest grant, to recommend approval of this action to the city council and board of finance.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries, and now the two, uh, twenty-twenty-four bulletproof vest grant, to transfer nine thousand, eight hundred seventy-one dollars from the general fund contingency account and additional appropriation of nineteen thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars within the special grants and donations fund for the twenty-twenty-four bulletproof vest grant, to recommend approval of this action to the city council and the board of finance.
Move approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We moved along very quickly. We will now do our monthly report, uh, by Diane.
Hopefully, this will be quick as well. I tried to give you a lot of information in this report. Um, I won't go through the revenue, tax revenues. As you can see, they're pretty much in line, or if not better, and I kinda put a graph in there so you could see where we were in prior years. Um, same thing with, uh, building permit fees and conveyance fees. Um, investment earnings are doing well, as expected, in my projections. Um, just wanna mention that overall, there will be a revenue surplus, and I'm estimating at about one and a half million dollars. So that's coming from those revenue sources that I just, uh, mentioned, which will help, um, with our year-end results. Um, on the expenditure side, uh, the city, uh, right now, we, at the time that I've, uh, wrote this report, there was about four point nine million in encumbrances outstanding. Well, I will ask before the end of this week to ask departments to go, start going through and start clearing out, um, their open encumbrances, trying to see what they can close out, what they don't need. For those that are new, what they do at the beginning of the year is a encumber for, um, do like a blanket purchase order for a lot of things that are just purchased like monthly. So we'll take a look at all of those. Be, uh, uh, liquidated at that point. Um, on the board of education side, uh, at the time that I wrote this, they were nine point one million over expended on their report. I do know that in the report that they included for their, uh, finance committee meeting tomorrow, uh, their snapshot shows eight point nine million. So it came, seems to keep fluctuating between eight point nine, nine point one. Um, I read another report today, it was nine point four. The only thing that I will say, uh, we, they, we have not yet received the second half of the excess cost grant. That estimate is about one point three million dollars. And we also will be receiving a share of the forty million that was just approved by the legislature for this current fiscal year. Um, we're hoping, we don't have a number for that, because that's something that will be divvied up amongst all communities that need that. Um, but, um, hoping the estimate will be one million or more on that. So roughly of that eight, nine million dollars, two point three anticipated revenues, um, I hope would come in towards that. Any questions on that piece of it? Um, with regard to how this will end up the end of the fiscal year, and I know I did talk about this during the budget process, um, I have been going through and updating some of the projections that I discussed during the budget process. Um, we looked at a lot of trends for revenues and expenditures on the city side, um, and exclusive of anything from the board of ed, um, I anticipate there will be about a two and a half to three million dollar surplus. Um, again, that's assuming board of ed came in on budget. City spent what I'm estimating, and the revenues come in where they are right now. Um, so conservatively, two and a half to three million dollars. Um, as I had mentioned, and I put in my report, anything over and above that, that we have to make up for on the board of ed side, will have to come from fund balance. Um, so continuing monitoring, monitoring that, I am updating our numbers. Uh, my staff went through and did a really good comprehensive analysis, uh, using trend data for the last three to five years on our expenditures, so I'm updating those, um, pretty much on a, every couple of week basis. And now that we're getting towards the end of the year, probably more frequently, um, just to see what, on the city side, we can use to offset, um, that deficit. Any questions on that? Uh, the budget, as you all know, the board of finance did adopt a budget last week. Um, it's two hundred and forty-two point six-six million. It's roughly a five point two-eight percent increase on expenditures, and, um, as you know, there is a mill rate increase of thirty-one point eight-five to three-three point seven-five. That is going to the joint meeting next Monday, May nineteenth, at five-thirty, so, uh, you all will need to vote on that then. Um, and then last thing, our favorite thing, I keep circling back to, that auditors have already reached out to us to start planning. So, um, we will be discussing with them and planning. Right now, it looks like, uh, field work will begin in eight, August, one week in August, and then two weeks in November at this point. Um, and I don't know if the city council knows this, but the board of finance did reappoint CLA for three years, their contract. Um, so they will be our auditors for the next couple of years. Any other questions?
Yes, through the chair. Um, is there any way that you could give me an idea of the intergovernmental grants that the city receives? And if there is, if there's been any discussion about the financial landscape, what it looks like moving forward with the uncertainty of what's going on in DC?
So on the general fund side, the only, we don't have, there's not a lot of federal money on the general fund side. Um, our state grant total that we budget is, uh, forty-seven point five-eight million. That's in the current year budget. Um, the majority of that is the ECS grant. Uh, the ECS grant is forty-one point six million of that. Our federal grants that we include in our operating budget, uh, is only one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. So it's nothing of real significance. The majority of the federal money does come in on the board of education side.
Okay, thank you. And Diane, maybe I can add one other thing too, 'cause CDBG grant funding comes through ECD, which doesn't really hit. That is currently on hold now, uh, number, about five hundred thousand, I think, uh, five hundred to six hundred thousand a year, which is a direct pass-through to our nonprofits. But that's at least been reported to us as on hold and likely to not get approved. The only difference is, is we're not sure if that is for the next fiscal year for the federal government, which starts in October, or if it's this year, but we, we think it would be for our fiscal year now, starting July one into that year as well. They overlap, but, um, those are the only things that I think we've heard of that should be affected.
And then if there's any infrastructure grants we get, but those are all capital in nature, not really hitting the general fund. And with the CDBG, we do pay a small, a portion of the CDBG budget, but the majority of it is out of the general fund and accounted for in a special revenue fund.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Diane? How about on Zoom? Everybody good on Zoom?
All good.
I'm all set, thank you.
Time, which is good. We are gonna start right at seven o'clock for city council meeting, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, too.
Thank you.
Start with the pledge of allegiance. To my right is the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, we will do, uh, quick introduction, starting on my right. Go ahead, Mark.
Mark Dickow, city council, district three.
Sue Tyler, city council, district two.
Sebastian Paniotto, city council, district one.
Cheryl Tebow, city council, district three.
Jacqueline Olson, city council, district two.
And Mayor Jeff Cagiano. And I'm gonna start off first with, uh, an all-heart award. Um, we have been very blessed in the city of Bristol to have Captains Emmanuel and Sharina Etcheverria servicing our citizens of Bristol for nearly ten years now. I think it's nine years and five months, you told me. Uh, we will be losing them as they're reassigned, but they have come here with their entire Salvation Army team. We will miss them greatly, and we do have this all-heart award for you, so I'll come up and get it, and we'll grab a picture.
Don't leave, we love you.
About face.
Oh, yes. So, um, I don't know if they are here. They're not here, unfortunately. So I think we're gonna postpone this one until, uh, the June meeting, 'cause I do not see the twenty-twenty-five all-heart parks advocate of the year. We'll probably do it in the parks board first, and so we'll push that one to the next meeting. So we'll move on to number two, which is the approval of the minutes from our April eighth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Move approval, second.
Any changes, corrections, additions? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number three is public participation, and Jeff Hayden, you're up first, the last that you, um, present. We'll, uh, keep it up to three minutes. I don't know if we have anybody on Zoom yet, but, uh, name and address for the record, too.
All right, uh, Jeff Hayden, fifty million delay, Bristol.
Great.
All right, so as some of you may recall, I was actually before you back in January with regards to adding some sidewalks on Tuttle Road. I was then, again, in front of some of you uh, at the board of public works, uh, meeting thereafter. Um, Mayor, you encouraged me twice to stick with the process. Um, and so that's actually kinda why I'm here again before the, the, the group here. Um, the code of ordinances actually says that city council is the correct venue, um, for this request. Um, section twenty-six, or twenty-one dash thirty-six says owners petitions and council initiative for new sidewalks. New sidewalks shall be installed in accordance with the procedures outlined in sections forty-three through forty-seven of the charter upon this, upon such streets or portions thereof, as the city council shall determine. The proceedings therefore may be initiated by either of the following methods. One being this, whenever the city council pursuant to a property owner's petition finds the same to be necessary and in the public interest as more fully provided for in sections forty-three through forty-seven of the city charter. Basically, um, you know, we have, and for those of you who weren't at the board of public works meeting, um, Ray Ragazinski provided a memo from, um, public works stating that they had the budget for the installation of the sidewalks, um, and that they'll cover it, so it won't cost the homeowners anything. Um, and there were some comments and concerns made that basically that the proposal was too small, it wouldn't really address the problem. The whole reason, actually, that I proposed, what I proposed, was to not have a large proposal, because that's gonna get shot down, it's gonna be expensive. I believe wholly, I'm a Republican, been a Republican for twenty-five years, I believe in the, the lowest remedy to solve the problem for the greatest good, okay? The reason that I proposed what I proposed is this is essentially, this is the school, this is the K-turn zone. So some of you did do sidewalks, and I really appreciate that time. Um, basically, uh, and my initial request really was just for a hundred feet through this vacant lot, essentially to the driveway here at ninety-three Tuttle. Ideally, as was described, um, by members who were there, um, that, yes, another eighty feet to the next driveway would absolutely be adequate and solve the problem. Um, basically, again, this is where cars K-turn. So the seventy cars that park along the road here have to turn somewhere to get to the road. Um, Southside School, I did all the math. They have the fewest, they have, they have over five hundred students, and they have only, I believe it was like seventy-nine parking spaces or something. It's something ludicrous. If you actually count up the parking spaces of all the other elementary schools, they have a ratio that is like five students to every one parking space. Um, it's, it's not a big ask. Um, again, it's in the budget, and just in summation, 'cause I'm sure I'm running out of time here. I, I, I stand up there and I wait for my son every day, and I watch. And this is something that happened about a month and a half ago. Woman walking with two children in a stroller. The, this car had just K-turned here. There was already a car coming down, car coming up. Now, this is obviously photographed, so this is, you know, snapshots in time and not, you know, you can imagine, this all occurred in about one and a half seconds. Small child broke away, jumped in front of this car right here. She grabs the kid just the last second, just as this car is passing, this car, boom, zoops out of the way, missing, missing the children that were in the road. The only reason they were in the road is they didn't have a sidewalk to walk on. Um, one of these days, and, and it has, that school has been there for seventy-year, you know, since nineteen seventy-five, and nothing's happened. But in that time, they added forty-five housing lots. There's a walk-through that goes to the Southridge condominiums, where there's another hundred and twenty-five units of housing stock, where those people do not get the, the, uh, benefit of a bus ride. And so if you're gonna make people not get a bus to school, you better make sure that they're safe when they walk to their cars or when they're walking home. Um, that's just reasonable, and they're installing three hundred feet of sidewalk through where there used to be the, the, um, tennis courts beyond the boulevard. So if we can put them there to go around gardens, why can't we put them at an elementary school on a dead-end road where seventy cars have to K-turn? It just seems reasonable to me. So whether you guys wanna do a, a public hearing, I would absolutely, you know, I have more people that would be more than happy to come and talk at the public hearing, if that's something. But again, I think this is something that should be before you all, so, but that.
Yep. That, uh, appreciate your opinion and your thought process, just for those that are not on public works, which is, I think, two of you. Um, we did go this completely through public works. Uh, there was a lot of public participation. There was both for and against. Uh, I think the depart, the, the public works board decided that, um, it was not a significant change. I think the bigger change is the traffic pattern within Southside School. Just to let you all know, I have reached out to the Southside School principal, uh, to ask them to take a look at, um, you know, keeping those cars in there, doing a little delayed dismissal perhaps for the walkers, um, and so that they can look into other things. But, um, the public works board is a, is a majority of this board, so they have spoken. So that's where I'll leave it. If anybody wishes to do anything else in the future, certainly reach out to me. All right, um, any public participation on Zoom? I don't see anybody on Zoom. Is that correct? That's unusual, but it'll keep us moving, so that's good. All right, um, move.
I think you have other people.
Oh, so, oh, if you'd like to speak, please come up. Yeah, you didn't, didn't sign up, but, uh, three minutes, please, name and address for the record. Our friends of the Hoppers are here.
And so I'm, uh, Michelle Rudy, and I live at one oh two Henderson Street. Um, so good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here representing the Friends of the Hoppers. Um, I will make this short and sweet. We are aware that the deep open space and watershed acquisition grant, the ASWA grant, will be announcing the rewards soon. And in the case that the grant comes in at less than the full amount that was offered by the city, we are offering to raise the money to fill in the gap. So we think there's a good possibility that we can make this happen. Uh, we have on our team Scott Heff, who is the executive director at the Environmental Learning Centers of Connecticut, and he's got a great deal of experience with fundraising, and he's got lots of contacts that he's willing to share. So we've been hearing that the city's budget is tight, and we wanna make this offer to lessen the city's burden and ensure that the deal goes through smoothly as planned. We are very grateful for all the hard work that went into this grant application, and we want to offer our help so that this deal comes through to the finish line.
Thank you very much. And I guess, uh, this would be a good opportunity to give everybody, uh, at least what we've heard about the grant, is that I think we've heard the same thing as you, that we're hoping sometime in early June, the grant announcements will be there. We don't have any indication for sure if we're gonna get the grant, if we'll get the full grant. Um, but the feedback we're getting from the state is that we scored extremely well on this grant, and they're very cautiously optimistic. So we will let you know as soon as we hear.
Very good.
All right, thanks. Any other public participation? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to announce. Oops, sorry. No, they're, they're all together, I think. Okay, great. We'll do announcements. So start at my left. Jackie, announcements.
Oh, announcement. You never start with me.
I gotta switch it up a little bit.
Um, the only announcement I have is, um, the Bristol Auto Club unfortunately had to cancel their, um, first showing on May third because of the weather. So that will be this coming Saturday, uh, will be their first, and we will, um, award them with their fiftieth anniversary.
Excellent, and thank you for standing in for me, because I will be out of town. I'll miss it, just to reschedule, so, Jackie, appreciate that. Go ahead, Cheryl.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna, uh, talk about the two events that are gonna wind down our spring series at downtown Rockwell Theater. Um, this Saturday, we have the String Queens. They're a dynamic trio that, um, does stimulating music that inspires a very diverse audience from Baroque to jazz to the Billboard Top One Hundred. Um, so they're an amazing trio of ladies that will be performing at seven PM. Tickets start at forty, and there are still tickets available. And then on the thirty-first, we have, um, Comedy Night at Downtown Live featuring Jimmy Cash, Jay Martin, and Ryan Brau. And, uh, Jimmy Cash has over one hundred thousand followers on Instagram and millions of views on his TikTok videos. He talks about all sorts of life issues and is a, um, pretty, uh, pretty good.
Comic?
Comic, thank you. I'm.
Comedian?
Comedian, that's what I was looking at. Um, he's, uh, opened many times for, um, Bob Marley in the past. Tickets go on sale for thirty-five dollars. Both shows start at seven, and tickets are available at downtownlivect.com. And then that'll pause for the summer, and we'll kick off our fall lineup, lineup with nineteen sixty-four, The Tribute. And this is a Beatles, uh, this will feature Beatles music. So I don't know if anybody here has seen The Beatles live. I was only five, so I did not. I wanna share that opening night for the Bristol Blues is Friday, June sixth. This is a great family activity. It's a lot of fun to go with friends. And tickets, uh, you can't go anywhere for this kinda price. They're only six dollars each, so it's a fantastic night. And then lastly, the Friends of the Library are once again accepting donations of books and other items. They do have some guidelines, um, hardcover and paperback books, audiobooks, CDs, DVDs, vinyl records, puzzles, textbooks if they're less than three years old. And they can also use some new or gently-used copy paper boxes. But do not put your books in the drop-off bin. Make sure you bring them into the desk. And I will, you can find this information at the library's Facebook page or online at their website. Thank you.
Great, and I have a couple of quick announcements, too. One is one that many people have been asking about. So Covanta slash ReWorld um, has been committed to doing engineering and different, uh, noise reduction target alterations. Um, they did shut down, and following a February engineering testing, the improvements were planned for the annual maintenance, uh, outage when they did shut down. During March of twenty-twenty-five outage on Boiler Two, they worked on replacing the boiler unit to spray dryer absorber vessel. I think Cheryl's the only one who's gonna understand all this stuff, but associated flue gas duct work and replacement of a flue guy, of the flue gas transition piece between the rectangular ID fan outlet and the round stack duct inlet. The new transition piece worked as completed on Boiler One during the, uh, annual maintenance back in April. Uh, these improvements represented over two million dollars of investment by ReWorld. Uh, the work has been completed. They did do an initial testing. Some of the noise, uh, vibrations, which it really is, it's a hypersonic noise, um, is very dependent on weather. Their initial testing looked very good. They are scheduled on May fifteenth, which is this week, to come back, weather permitting, uh, to do a second test. And, um, I think the only other thing to communicate, and I got this from Dawn Harmon, who is their new government relations person, is that, um, maybe the misnomer that there would never be any noise is a misnomer. It's been making noise for forty years. I think the difference was when they originally changed out the unit one duct fans and other things, there, this little vibration started. So that's what they've been working on fixing. Obviously, we know the Bristol Burlington Health Department has been monitoring this as well, and there was a notice of violation from them. Uh, they're cautiously optimistic, but we should get more information after their May fifteenth testing. Again, weather dependent. Any questions we have on that?
Um, excuse me. Was that an email that you received from Dawn?
That was an email that I did receive from Dawn directly after an individual meeting for us.
Did you actually forward that to me?
I could forward that to all, anybody who is interested.
All right, thank you.
Great. Uh, the other announcement that I have is kind of a fun announcement. So when I came into office, uh, we had to pack up and start moving City Hall right away. And I picked up this book in my office. It's the Bristol Mayor's. Uh, that's all it says on the front, but it's the history of all of the Bristol mayors. It was done by, you know, twenty or thirty people over the years, and all we had was this paper copy. So for the past, uh, couple of years, and it's not quite a couple of years, because as soon as we had Tom Dickow, who's sitting in the audience, become the city historian, I asked him to start working on this book, because the goal is to make this book, uh, something that is more accessible and certainly complete. So this book went up to Mike Nacastro and did not even complete his term. I think it was actually done, oh, sorry, Frank Nacastro, boy, Mike's not here, is he? Yeah, but that's not a bad, uh, compliment to give him either. Anyway, uh, Frank Nacastro's term hadn't ended, and, uh, they didn't put all of the information there. So thank you to Tom Dickow, our city historian, who has collected the, um, bios for the rest of the Nacastro term and all of the mayors, even through part of mine. So mine is a, a short one. We did it for the first two years. Uh, and then a huge thank you to Jen Lishness, who works part-time in our office. Uh, she, this is a paper copy, and I'll pass it on to you. It's, it's a little bit of a draft. She's gotta do a couple of other things. But all this is, is a printout of now, an, a word slash PDF file that will now be able to be posted. So within the next week or so, we hope to post this on the, the mayor's page and put history in action. So I thought that was kind of a cool thing to share with you. And that's all I have. Sebastian, do you have any announcements?
No announcements tonight.
Cheryl, uh, Sue, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just starting with the senior center, on Wednesday, June eighteenth at six PM, uh, there will be a seminar at the senior center, um, called Avoiding Homelessness One-O-One. This is a team of Bristol real estate and housing professionals, and they're gonna be having a discussion on different creative ways of avoiding homelessness. And we know that our senior citizens, um, are already in tough spots, having to make tough choices, and they are very high risk for this situation. So this is gonna be a great seminar for, um, anyone who is a member of the senior center. Moving on to, um, that, in nineteen sixty-two, President Kennedy declared Peace Officers Memorial Day to be observed on May fifteenth, and recognized the week around this date to be National Police Week. We are actually in the midst of National Police Week right now. Um, and tonight, down in DC, they are holding the thirty-seventh annual candlelight vigil. Um, and this is in memory of all of our law enforcement officers throughout the years that we have lost. So just kinda sticking with, uh, our law enforcement, um, our police department has several things going on. On June fifth, at around one o'clock, the Special Olympics torch run, which will be starting at the Wilkett Town Line up on Wilkett Street, um, will be a six-point-seven-five-mile run, uh, with some of our Special Olympians. Will head down onto Route Six and join up with Farmington P D at the Farmington Town Line. Um, Mayor, are you running this year?
As usual, yes.
Um, moving on to, let's see, there was one other thing here. June thirteenth, um, at six-thirty, there will be Bristol Blues First Responder Night at Muzzy Field. Uh, more information to follow, but keep an eye on the Bristol Blues, um, Facebook page or website for that. And I'm gonna start this one, and then I'm gonna pass it over to my colleague from District Three. On June twelfth, six to ten PM at the Doubletree this year. On June 12th, 6 to 10 PM at the Doubletree this year, uh, economic development at its best. We pulled it from the aqua turf, and we are supporting a Bristol business. Um, the Exchange Club will be um, hosting and sponsoring the um, annual Honoring Heroes Dinner. And this year, uh, we will be honoring Officer Jake Pollock and, of course, his uh, partner, K-9 Hero. And I will now pass this over to Mark to finish this one.
Along with um, Jake and Hero, they're also going to be honoring the youth cadet Sean Gonzalez, Merrimack EMT of the Year Kevin Saratello, Ryan Thomas, and Nicole Abisha. And distinguished service award recipient will be um, Harley Graves. And that is, like she said, being sponsored by the Exchange Club. It's $50 a person, or you can reserve an entire table for $500.
Great, thanks. Sue, do you have any more?
I actually wanted to piggyback on another thing that you had there. I can't remember which one it was. Oh, the um, Special Olympics. They are going to be moving their headquarters to Bristol. Their state headquarters are gonna be moving over by ESPN.
Correct.
On Dolphin Road.
They're, they're working on that. It's a work in progress, but I did actually get to do a visit a little while ago, so they're still waiting on some funding, architecture, things of that. So hopefully a ribbon cutting this year at some point. Great. Anything else? Or announcements? Uh, one other just quick one, because I am gonna do this one to Sue on May 22nd. We are gonna do the annual Connecticut Ride um, to Post Academy. It's also um,
Oh.
in honor of uh, the fallen officers, and um, I, I typically do that one. I just gotta get a bike for May 22nd, so we'll do that one as well.
But we also like, wanna mention the Memorial Day parades that are happening. Um, because um, the Forestville Parade will be on Sunday afternoon. I'm trying to think. I believe it's at 1:00 PM.
Correct.
Uh, in the center of Forestville. And then the procession downtowns-
I think it's 9:30 on Monday morning. Let me just double check.
And this will start at the, over here by the parking lot and transpire down uh, the boulevard.
Yep.
Do you have the time?
The 9:30, yep. Excellent. Any other announcements? Alright, hearing none. We'll move on to the Consent Agenda number 5. We have Items A through J. Does anybody wish to withdraw anything? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we move on to 6, which is Reports and Committee Reports, and uh, Sue, we'll start with you with Real Estate Committee.
Hey, thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion. I hereby move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to enter into a 60-day listing agreement with Bottom Line Realty to act as its real estate agent for the sale of city-owned property known as 91 Goodwin Street, Map 25A, Lot 36. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to sign any document necessary to effectuate this motion, and that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council.
Second.
Great, and Sue, any comments? I know we're, we're trying something here, right?
Well, yes. Um, we've kind of gotten a couple of pieces of property in, whether it be through foreclosure. Um, and we had one other lot that we just put out for RFP, which is a process where we put it out for bid. Um, we'll be discussing that one at our Real Estate Committee meeting next month. And with this particular piece, we figured we would try putting it out listed for sale with our real estate broker. It's gonna be a really good um, experiment um, to see kind of um, you know, the return on the investment, uh, what's best for the taxpayers. And so one went through one process, one will be through another process, and we kind of wanna see what the, the best avenue is.
Yep, and the, uh, Eric's not here, but Mark, any comments from Real Estate?
No.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to Ordinance Committee, uh, 6. Sebastian?
Sure, I'll make a motion to waive the reading here. In accordance with Section 41F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, I hereby move that the reading of the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances to be introduced this date pertaining to Section 7-18 Fire Suppression Systems Inspection be waived.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
In accordance with Section 41F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, the following amendments to the Code of Ordinances are hereby introduced. I hereby move that the time and place of Tuesday, June 3rd at 4:50 PM in Meeting Room 1-1, City Hall, First Floor, 111 North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the Ord- committee, and that the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by City Charter.
Uh, second.
Second, very good. Sebastian, you wanna just highlight some of the changes for us? Yep?
Sure, we uh, we had some communication with uh, the Fire Department and Chief Hart. Um, we're having a little bit of a challenge with some um, an odd number of uh, fire hydrants on private property that we're looking to get um, in, in um, in order with uh, maintaining records and inspections and having those records submitted to the city. Um, we've, we're trying to institute um, a fine schedule here and a um, a system for appeal um, for those folks to get more compliance with testing and maintaining records of those fire hydrants on pro- uh, private property.
Great. Any other comments from ordinance?
Um, yeah, this really summed out of um, with Chief Hart and the uh, Fire Commission. Um, there are so many hydrants that our department can't rely on as being usable when they pull up to a property, and the private property owners are supposed to maintain the inspections and submit the data. Um, this only, this also applies to sprinkler systems, uh, emergency generators, emergency radio response coverage, and all these items, which we should have certification that they've been inspected and are up to par. So um, this, when it's enforced, will give our team of our local uh, Fire Department and our Fire Marshal reliance on those systems that they'll be working when they're needed.
Excellent. Good. Other comments, questions? I'll put it up for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Um, we'll start on my right this time, Jackie. Mark, any committee reports?
I do not have any.
Anything further, Sue?
Nothing for this month.
Nope. Sebastian, further?
Just real quick, um, the Arts and Culture Commission did have a walk of the cultural district this morning with the State of Connecticut, and there were other municipalities that joined in that are looking to start such a district. Um, they're really uh, like what we're doing here in Bristol and highlighting our attractions. And we're also putting together a map to, to pinpoint those attractions and businesses in the district. And that's the only report I'll give today.
Excellent, and I did do part of that walk. So uh, they started that two years ago, and we got permission. We were, I think, the fifth or sixth uh, to join, and it has expanded almost by double the, the different culture, cultural and entertainment places. So they had a very good walk today. We had good weather, and uh, they were very pleased. And we're still spreading that word of Downtown Live, so we were getting 20 and 30 miles out now for some of these other towns.
Right, and it's exciting because we're trying to, the more we highlight it, the more people will come downtown. And that's the goal, is to let people know there's things to do here in Bristol.
Great. And Jackie, any committee reports?
Uh, yes, I have just uh, an update on the Edgewood School Building Committee. Um, we are moving forward with the roof repair, and I believe we've sent out a request to purchasing, um, to send out for bids for uh, architect. And I did tour the school last week, and it appears to me there's going to be a lot of more work necessary to be completed to make sure that we send those kids back into a safe and healthy environment.
Yep, I would agree with you. Only other comment I will make too, and this is something that has been talked about, so I'll put it on public record, is the improvements, and I intended the, the one Edgewood Committee with you, is these are focused on the roof and future mechanicals on top of the roof, because the mechanicals right now are underground. Um, so there will be other requirements uh, to bring that building up to code over time. Um, but we're gonna move forward with those. That's what the Building Committee wants to do. The money has been allocated by the city, and so we're gonna move forward. The only other corollary to that is I did do a walkthrough at the Giamatti Little League Center with uh, the Board of Education just Monday morning. And uh, they are looking to move the students uh, there on a temporary basis. They're looking at a lease arrangement that, at this point, is starting about that 12, uh, $120,000, so $12,000 uh, a month for 10 months. It's a good symbiotic relationship because they only use the, the uh, dormitories in July and August. So it's a temporary measure, and for the rest of us too, that means that we will move forward with our project to put BBHD into the old Beck Center uh, starting July 1. They'll be out of the school by June 30th. Alright. I don't have any other, oh, um, no, I don't have any other. We had the Northeast Middle School uh, Building Committee today, uh, and things are on track with that. Uh, there was one thing. There was a lot of rain, and they're in that early construction period where some of those neighbors on Illinois and others uh, were experiencing some problems. And I know you asked me about this, Cheryl. The, they did go to a lot of those neighbors, they're kind of apologizing. A little bit out of your control when you just get a five-and-a-half-inch rainstorm during it, but they're aware of it. They're putting the fixes in place, and uh, things have been, nothing needed to be remediated, so it wasn't that bad, but um, they, they have their eye on it.
Right, and also if we could keep an eye on um, the blow-up dust so that it doesn't cover their homes or pools and get in their windows when they open them, because they, they've been uh, worried about that as well.
If it ever dries out, we'll have to go into a drought. Now, we've been very wet, so one, it's a yin or yang type thing. Alrighty, we're gonna move on to number 7, which is Old Business. Does anybody have any old business? How about New Business, number 8? Any new business? Alright, number 9 is Resignations. Um, I think you have those for me?
Yes.
There are a couple-
We have two. Shannon Maltz from the Bristol Burlington Health District, and Matt Varanowski from the School Readiness Council.
Great, and we, just to be very transparent for everybody, and I think I forwarded this email to you all uh, late to uh, this afternoon. We have a couple of other resignations that are likely coming. Just a reminder, a resignation via email is not an official resignation, so we need that signed copy that goes to the clerk's office, so we're expecting a couple of those. Um-
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resignations and send a letter to those individuals thanking them for their service.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we're on to the appointments. And just a quick announcement on this as well too, and a, a operational type of update for all of you. So these things change on literally a daily basis. So I, I got another change uh, right before this meeting for an appointment that comes tonight, but we wanted to, in the uh, realm of transparency, try to get this out to all of you. And so I just wanna very highlight something. Thanks to Erica for putting this out, and Jen Lishness, who works in the office Monday morning, Wednesday morning, and Thursday morning. And she's the one that's mainly driving this list right now. That is her biggest primary uh, uh, goal in her, in that position. When we uh, brought in Erica as a new town clerk, we took paper records that were kept by the city clerk only. We are now sharing them with Erica, but the mayor's office is trying to drive all of these appointments. Uh, it's very fluid. This is actually a small month with just a number of openings. Uh, June will be a very busy month when we come to uh, end of appointments for things like Board of uh, Finance and things like that. So it's very fluid, and I just wanna highlight 100 times here, and I can't say it enough, that what you see as the draft on the publication of our, our council agenda could change, but it's the best information we have at that time. If at any point before that is posted, you're looking for information on what the current list is, uh, you can reach out to Jen, and if Jen's not available, you know, Erica or I could provide that for you as well too. But um, we start working on it usually two or three weeks before the meeting, uh, and we've had as many as 14 or 15 different uh, versions of it. So in order to not get version control have a problem by sending this out on a regular basis, we're just gonna post it um, when the, when the meeting notice is posted. Alright? Any questions on that, though? We, we've gone through a couple of iterations. I think we finally have this down. I did tell the story, and this is true. I used to sweat when we came up to appointments because I always knew that I was likely to make a mistake. There's just so many moving parts, but I think we're getting to the point where I feel pretty good about it. So let's move on to them. Our first appointment is with Bristol Burlington Health Department. Uh, Shannon Maltz uh, resigned, and we want to appoint Chris Hayden uh, to replace her, and that term will expire on 7/26.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. On the Fair Rent Commission, we established this a couple of years ago, and these are rolling uh, reappointments, but the three that we have to reappoint all would like to be reappointed. The Fair Rent Commission's doing a great job, so we can do these together, but we're gonna reappoint Brian Brown, who represents the landlords. His term will expire on 5/28. Adam Brothwell, he represents the homeowners. His term will expire on 5/28. And Ryan Carrier, who's an alternate, his term will expire on 5/28.
So moved. Second.
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Uh, on the Historic District Commission, Daphne Delgado, um, her term will expire on 1/26? I didn't write it on this one. I wrote it on all the other two. 1/26, and she replaces uh, Mary Beth McAvitts.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Alright, uh, Inland Wetlands, we have two separate ones, so we'll take them separately. We're gonna reappoint David Rooks. Uh, his term will expire on 5/28.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And unfortunately, we announced this last month, uh, James Ritchie passed away. He was a regular member, so we are going to appoint Laura Mastropatisto Valentino to be that full member, and her term will expire on 5/28.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. So it looks like, just to talk about this as well, we're gonna have uh, two more alternate positions that will be available in Inland Wetlands. We are gonna have, it looks like two, uh, at least two positions opening on Zoning Board of Appeals, which is kind of unusual that we're having two people resign at the same time. Some of them are actually moving out of town. Um, and these um, you know, land use committees are difficult to recruit for, so please funnel those in to Jen and I as well. If you have people that are interested in serving on those boards and commissions, uh, we're always open to interviewing people and getting a long list together.
Just ask a question about this one?
Yep.
Um, because the original list that came out, it had Greg Kleemich being appointed to-
Yep.
As a full member.
Correct. So they, both Greg and Laura were alternates. Um, one of the things I like to do for the land use uh, committees is we appoint people to the land use committee, and then they are pretty much a quasi-state agency, and they run it the way they like. So we got, you know, information from the chair and from our department uh, heads that work with them, and they made the recommendation to bring Laura up. Laura actually was appointed about a month after Greg. Um, and there were other reasons that they gave that I can talk to you about after, but we took their recommendation and changed it. And so that, that's how things change. So-
Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions? Alright, I think we're good on that. So we will now move to our contracts and agreements, and I don't have my glasses on. You have the first one up?
Is there a school ready?
I might.
Uh, oh, so another change. School Readiness Committee, um, the state is gonna go ahead and change the uh, the organization and combine those two. There's only one month left, and um, Matthew actually was still debating on whether he still wanted to be appointed. So we're putting that one on hold per Donna O'Sutch today. So these are how these things change. Thank you, though. I appreciate you bringing it up. And that's good that we get it ahead of time, so you guys can keep me on task on these. Excellent. Contract, 11A.
As Erica mentioned, these are flip-flopped in our agenda, so I'm actually reading 11B, which is on the agenda as 11A. To, um, I'd like to make a motion to award Contract 2P25-016 Consulting Engineering Services for Climate Resiliency Flooding, Storm Drainage to Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated in the amount of 225,200 dollars, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effect said contract.
Okay.
Great. Any comments or questions on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries, and it's technically 11A now, but it's 11B on our agenda.
Make a motion to consider an approved and agreement by and between the City of Bristol and Bristol Hospital Incorporated for continued hospital access to the Bristol Police Department Land Mobile Radio Network, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the City of Bristol.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Somebody have 11C?
I do. Um, I make a motion to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute a tariff agreement with the Connecticut- agreement with the Connecticut Light and Power Company doing business as EverSource Energy relative to a non-residential renewable energy solution revenue sharing agreement between the City of Bristol and Green Skies Clean Energy LLC, and to refer to the Office of Corporation Council for review.
Second.
Great. Comments or questions about this? This is going through a couple times.
We're doing tariffs.
Yeah. This is related to our other things that we've talked about in Energy Commission before. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And the last contract is 11D. Who wants it?
Make a motion to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute an NRES municipal revenue share agreement with Green Skies Clean Energy LLC as a solar development partner for a 20-year term, and to refer to the Office of Corporation Council for review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We move on to number 12. And I can open this one up, too. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the organization that applied for the 2025 Neighborhood Assistance Program and forward these applications to the Connecticut Department of Revenue Services for consideration. The list is listed here, Boys and Girls Club, Family Center, Greater Bristol Historical Society, Greater Bristol Homes, Human Resources Agency of New Britain, New England Carousel Museum, Nutmeg Symphony Orchestra, Prudence Crandall Center, has two different ones, Shepherd Meadows Equestrian Center, Special Olympics Connecticut, United Way of Central Connecticut, and Veteran Strong Community Center.
Second.
We'll abstain of vote here. I'm a member of one of the boards.
Okay. Can I ask you, we'll leave, we'll take the vote when you come out. He's got a conflict. He's a member of one of the boards. We missed it early, but we'll give him a second. That's the Carousel Museum, so we have a second. You motioned it, correct, Cheryl?
You motioned it. I seconded it.
No, I proposed a motion. You motioned it, and we have a second from Jackie. All right, good. We still have a quorum in the room, which is great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We're good. Sebastian, come on back in. Look at that. Look at how quick he is. All right. I can't believe the timing on who just walked in the door as well. So we are ready to go into executive session. And Attorney Corwicky, it's all of us, all the lawyers.
And Eric Bartlett, our outside counsel.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We're in executive session. All right. So just a reminder, no votes were taken in executive session. And by one of my friends in Nogatuck, we really can't take them to come out, so I'm going to declare us out of executive session. And I think we have a motion to my left. Go ahead.
Yes. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a full and final settlement in the matter of James Blashke versus City of Bristol for any and all workers' compensation claims for the total amount of $390,000. The dates of these claims are listed below but are not limited to the following. May 27, 2004, August 28, 2004, March 17, 2007, September 25, 2008, February 9, 2010, January 7, 2013, November 5, 2014, February 16, 2016, October 14, 2016, February 6, 2022, July 19, 2022, and April 24, 2023. I further move that the mayor, acting mayor, Corporation Council, or Assistant Corporation Council be authorized to execute the final, full and final settlement.
Second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. I don't think there's any other business to go before us.
A motion to adjourn?